Good evening and welcome to the District 6 Board of Education Work Session. Today is the 27th of March, it is 4:39 PM. And so, welcome, and we'll call this work session to order. And Ms. Richards? Oh, there you went. Oh, there you went. Would you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Dr. Campus Spitzey?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Pappas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
Seven members present.
Ms. Richards. Next on our first on our list is our calendar review and community engagement. So, Ms. Pappas, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, I do want to add the Best Buddies event that's happening in Greeley Central, I believe, on Wednesday, the 29th. And we were given this invitation by Tommy Medina a few meetings ago. And I don't think you have to RSVP, but I think that...
That West?
Isn't it at Greeley? It's at Central. I thought it was at Central.
I thought it was at Central.
Oh, the West Parking Lot.
It's capitalized. Makes you think it's at... Pretty sure it was at Central. And I'm trying to see the times here, but I think, oh yeah, 10 and 1.
And virtually at 6.
And but you have to RSVP if you're going to do the virtual. Anything else you want to add to that?
Sorry. I'm a visual learner, so I saw the capital W for the West Parking Lot.
So, park at Greeley West.
Yeah, then walk to Greeley Central.
Okay. All right, so that's the 29th. Two days. And you said what time again, Ms. Pappas?
10 and 1.
10 and 1. All right, then on the 30th, we have the Maplewood Smart Lab celebration. And this is opening another Smart Lab. Important event to be in attendance, if you can be in attendance for that. And then, school visit to Twintown on the 28th. Boys and Girls Club Annual Dinner on the 29th. District 6 Retirement Dinner on the 3rd. So, that's a ways away still, but that is one to make sure that you get on your calendar. That is an important...
Well, good evening and welcome to the District 6 Board of Education Work Session. Today is the 27th of March. It is 4:39 PM. And so, welcome. And we'll call this work session to order. And Ms. Richards? Oh, there you went. Oh, there you went. Would you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Dr. Campus Spitzey?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Pappas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
Seven members present.
Ms. Richards. Next on our first on our to-do list is our calendar review and community engagement. So, Ms. Pappas, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, I do want to add the Best Buddies event that's happening in Greeley Central, I believe, on Wednesday, the 29th. And we were given this invitation by Tommy Medina a few meetings ago. And I don't think you have to RSVP, but I think that...
That West?
No. Isn't it at Greeley? It's at Central. I thought it was at Central.
Oh, the West parking lot.
It's capitalized.
Makes you think it's at...
Pretty sure it was at Central. And I'm trying to see the times here, but I think, oh, yeah, 10 and 1.
And virtually at 6.
And but you have to RSVP if you're going to do the virtual. Anything else you want to add to that?
Sorry. I'm a visual learner, so I saw the capital W for the West parking lot.
So, park at Greeley West.
Yeah.
All right. So, that's the 29th.
Yes.
Two days. And you said what time again?
10 and 1.
10 and 1. All right. Then on the 30th, we have the Maplewood Smart Lab celebration. And this is opening another Smart Lab. Important event to be in attendance, if we, if you can be in attendance for that. And then the school visit to Twinton on the 28th, Boys and Girls Club Annual Dinner on the 29th, District 6 Retirement Dinner on the 3rd. So, that's a ways away still. But that is one to make sure that you get on, on your calendar. That is an important, important event for us to be in attendance. Fred Chardis School of Innovation Museum Night on the 5th, the Farewell to Madison on the 15th of May. And then 16th is Project Search graduation. And then we're into graduations. There's a series of those, but pay attention to when those are and how respond to which graduations that you can attend. I think via email. Any other events that we need to know about?
President, I'll just point out that I canceled the meeting invites for April 17th and 18th for teacher negotiations. I think we have wrapped that up. And I'll have a report, we'll have a report for you on April 10. And we'll bring the, the teachers and administrators back together in early May, just to keep the committees moving, just so we don't lose anything that we promised to do over the summer and into the fall. But I don't think there's a need to bring the Board of Education back in.
Okay.
So, thank you.
That's great.
Got some time back on your calendars.
Can you do an explanation as to what Project Search graduation is? I don't remember this one.
I can.
Oh, cool. I was just going to say, it's the transition program. They started a new program at, I believe it's NCMC?
UC Health.
UC Health, yes. So, go ahead. You can give more about that's what the...
It's, um, there's a few students who, out of the transitions program, once they've graduated, they were placed in a work position at UC Health. Some were volunteer, and now some have actually been hired. And so, it's, those students had this full year to do an onsite work, kind of internship. And now they're graduating at the end of their school year. And some, some are being hired, I understand, from Maryland Shock.
That's impressive.
Any other questions? I would just, I'll add on dress, guys. Especially for things like the Boys and Girls Annual Dinner, the Retirement Dinner, graduations, our dress. If we're going to an honoring event, our, our dress should be honoring. So, that's a good way to, to think about if it's okay to, if it's okay to wear jeans or not. On those, on those events that I just listed off, it is not acceptable to wear, to wear jeans. Whereas, you know, Farewell to Madison, you might, might be just fine. So, any other questions on the calendar? All right. We'll return to our legislative update. And I'll invite Mr. Fall to come and brief us on what the legislature's going to do.
Thank you, President Matthews and members of the board, Dr. Pilch. I am here to provide you with another legislative update for a few pertinent bills for a discussion. I have three bills for us to discuss today. And of course, if you have any other bills that you've been thinking about, or you have any questions about, please let me know. And I can certainly circle back and provide you with some more information on them. The first bill that I want to discuss is House Bill 231109, School Policies and Student Conduct. This is that expulsion bill. We know that there were some concerns raised about Greeley's, Greeley Evan School District's process in terms of expulsions. I think that we've gotten that cleared up with some of the stakeholders and sponsors behind the bill, certainly understanding that our process is in strictly accordance with Colorado law. I think there were some questions that District 6 in particular assumes that if a student is charged with a criminal act, that we will expel that student regardless of whether or not it happened in school grounds. That is blatantly false. And that's something that we've certainly addressed, again, with stakeholders and lawmakers, that that's not something that's happening. Regardless, I think that with this bill, there's been a lot of school districts that have had a lot of concerns about the language behind 1109 regarding kind of the extent to which they're going to make expulsions much, much more challenging for school districts, as well as a lot of additional reporting requirements for expulsions. I think our primary concerns previously with House Bill 1109 involved the expulsion process specifically relating to disability for folks to cross-examine witnesses for expulsion hearings. We think that that would have some kind of freezing effect on individuals who'd want to provide support for expulsions because they would certainly not want to come to an expulsion hearing and be cross-examined during an expulsion process. And that language has since been removed. So, there has been an amendment offered to this bill. It is essentially a strike below, meaning that they have rewritten the bill in its entirety. That has yet to be introduced, but that will be reviewed by the House Education Committee coming up on Wednesday, March 29. Just a few key pieces to this amended bill is that previously, the bill had been written that all evidence must be provided within five days of the expulsion hearing. The bill's been drafted to lower that down to two days for provision of records. They've removed that cross-examination language. They've also provided a timeline for findings, which would be by a hearing officer, who would then make that written recommendation to Dr. Pilch, who's our executive director for District 6. And then there are some kind of timeline provisions in terms of Dr. Pilch then either upholding or rejecting the hearing officer's recommendations. It's down to a five-day period now. And then there are some kind of additional appeal provisions that have been introduced to this bill. If it were to pass, that would come in front of this board, of course. At least since I've been here, I haven't seen any appeals for expulsions. But that, that's a little bit more clear now in the law for how that appeal is made and what the board would be looking at specifically in the appeal. There are some now conflict of interest provisions that have been included in this amended bill. So, the hearing officer, if there's any potential conflict of interest for a student who's being expelled, that they would need to recuse themselves from that decision. I don't think that would be a problem here in District 6. We outsource our hearing officer. I know that a lot of school districts actually have a school administrator doing their appeals. In District 6, we actually outsourced that to a third party. His name is Sonny Subia. He's been doing it for a long, long time. He's very knowledgeable about the expulsion process. He's very good with working with students and understanding kind of their circumstances. And he makes really informed decisions when it comes to expulsions. So, I think a lot of these changes, I don't really have a whole lot of issue with. But, you know, regardless, there are still some changes to the expulsion law that might be challenging. I think in particular, that two-day records provision might be challenging if, for example, we receive information within 24 hours of an expulsion hearing, and we are not able to introduce that information so that Mr. Subia can't make an informed decision regarding the expulsion. The bill also includes some hearing officer training requirements. I would say that this is a good thing. This is to kind of provide hearing officers statewide with some, some basic knowledge about expulsions, as well as things like the Individuals with Disabilities Act and things of that nature, and so they can make better informed decisions. And this would be something that would be created by a committee, who'd come up with examples of what hearing officers must be trained to do. And I could certainly anticipate that Mr. Subia or whatever third party we have as our hearing officer would certainly take that training if that were to be required by law. The last piece is this behavior off school grounds. That was another concerning piece to the original bill as drafted. They've since amended that language. Of course, if it's, there's a delinquency that happened off school grounds, that's not automatic grounds for expulsion. That's been written into the law, or at least into this bill. Again, that is not a practice that we do. That's not a practice that most school districts do. And so, I can't imagine that that would be, have any effect on this particular school district when it comes to expulsions. And then the other piece to the off-school grounds, originally, when the bill was drafted, it stated that you couldn't expel a student for behavior off school grounds only if it were a threat to other students. They've kind of amended that language to state detrimental to the welfare or safety of other pupils or school personnel, which could include behavior that creates a risk of harm, of physical harm. I, I think in my take, at least when I was originally looking at this bill, behavior off school grounds could include such things like cyberbullying. We know that cyberbullying does happen. We know that it is pervasive, not just in this school district, but in kind of with students nationwide. The cyberbullying does happen, and it does have a detrimental impact on students when they are at school. Of course, that would be a really high bar for us to prove. And that's not something that we're necessarily looking to do to consequence a student for off-school behavior. Nonetheless, I think that we would like to at least have the opportunity, if it ever came down to it, to potentially consequence a student for certain behaviors. Again, this is not something we're looking to do or have a desire to do. But I can certainly imagine a situation, and I'm sure you all can imagine a situation, where it might be helpful to address things like cyberbullying for students, when even if it occurs off school grounds. And then the last part of the amendment to this policy is there having kind of an expulsion policies task force. They're going to look to create kind of a statewide standards in terms of how expulsions should be done. We already know that this is statutory, and our expulsion process here in District 6 is in alignment with Colorado law. So, of course, if this expulsion policy task force were to come together and make changes to the statutory policies for expulsions, that would be something that we would be looking to change in the future. So, I just wanted to point this out to you all. This bill has been heavily amended, and we will likely see the House Education Committee reviewing it again on March 29. And we'll see kind of any outcomes. I'm still taking a position, it's my recommendation, that we do look to additional amendments if possible, at least as it pertains to those records provisions. But nonetheless, I, I think that a lot of these changes are a lot better than the original bill as drafted. So, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or considerations or questions. Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a comment. So, with this, when we started talking about this, I know Sonny, and so I talked to him a little bit. And he gave me permission to share comments, his comments at the meeting today. So, for those of you who don't know Sonny Subia, he's been the expulsion officer for the district for 25 years, and has had over 2,500 kids expelled through that job. He, with the original writing of the bill was not in favor of it as it was written overall. The one piece from the beginning that he loved was what you called the hearing officer piece. So, he thought that was great. He says, "It calls for training and yearly updates on school policies." And he said, "I would support this 100 percent." So, for that part specifically, he was a big fan. And then, yeah, they've taken out some of the things that he really didn't like, the cross-examination, which, you know, I think you even pointed out that with Safe to Tell, there was a bit of conflict there. If it's Safe to Tell, but now all of a sudden you're getting cross-examined, that witnesses wouldn't, would maybe fear retribution from the students. It wouldn't come be as open to giving key evidence. So, I'm really glad that was removed. And then, the turnaround time was also, it sounds like from five days to two days is an improvement. But it sounds like, from what you're saying with the amend, that you'd want that timeline to come down even further. And Sonny's reasoning for it, at least, was the longer it takes, that student could still pose a risk to, to students and staff at the school, if this process gets kind of lengthened more than it has to. So, what, I'm curious, Nate, from five to two, what, what would be a more reasonable, that, that provision for the records provision? What timeline do you think you would feel more comfortable with?
You know, I, I would say that there isn't a timeline provision included. We're certainly not there to surprise anybody with information. But information comes when it comes. And we don't want to kind of, and I think that, that you through Mr. Subia have put it well, that we don't want to kind of delay this process, particularly if an individual student does pose a risk of harm to others, that we're kind of continuing to delay this process just because we're not falling within that two-day statutory window. I do know that we do everything in our power to provide information to all the parties, as is reasonable. But there could be times where some information comes forward before a hearing, and then we would have to delay it even further to kind of provide them with additional notice. And, and I think in a lot of these cases, the facts are the facts, and there really isn't a surprise anyways. And so, to just delay that process, just because a particular written statement has come forward, might, might surprise somebody. I'm just not sure if there's really an argument there. So, my position, and I believe that the Safety and Security Department might agree, is that having kind of that, that provision in there just should be stricken in its entirety.
Just be removed. And then, I think all of us were concerned the first time we heard about the bill, about the cyberbullying and outside of physical harm, the psychological and mental health harm to students that can happen through cyberbullying, and whether that kind of harm would be addressed. And I think by expanding the language of detrimental to the welfare, I feel like welfare, you can extrapolate to psychological and mental health harm. That said, you said, it would be hard to prove that kind of stuff. But at least the language is more consistent with trying to.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that comment a lot. And, and again, it's not something we're looking to do. But, but I can certainly just imagine a situation where that might come to fruition. And, and there might be a need to address it from the school level. So, we, we just want to have our options available to us.
So, I think looking at it, outside of that A point, the five-day to two-day, like, I would say if, if A were removed at that point, I, I might even support the, with, with how heavily amended it was.
Yeah. And, and I'm certainly open to, to changing to a position of monitor, even sort of depending on what this board believes is, is kind of the right direction.
Currently, we're, our lobbyist is working to get this amended, correct?
Yeah. And we are in a position to amend as per the previous draft. Again, this, this current amendment hasn't been introduced to the committee yet. It was just kind of shared with me. And I can share with you all after this meeting, and just so you can kind of read through what those proposed amendments are. But they actually haven't been officially proposed at this time. And so, if those, if these aren't going to move forward, we certainly still are in a position to amend if we're going to be talking about the bill as it was originally drafted.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next bill, Senate Bill 23170, Extreme Risk Protection Order petitions. This bill, and, and I don't, I'm not an expert in criminal law, nor am I necessarily an expert in what extreme risk protection orders are. But just so you're familiar, those are kind of what's been called the red flag law, right? So, if an individual poses a danger to themselves or others, then there are a few categorically identified individuals who can petition for what's called an extreme risk protection order. And what that does is it is a temporary restriction of, for a person in crisis from possession or purchasing firearms. That temporary restriction is 14 days. And then this goes through a court appellate process. And if the court appels that that individual does, is in fact a danger to themselves or others, that could become a permanent restriction, which is up to a year, where they are prevented from purchasing or possessing firearms. So, right now, the law as it stands is that the only individuals who can petition for an extreme risk protection order are, are law enforcement officers, or any individual who is quote, "close" to the person in question. That's been defined to be family members, roommates, other individuals that are very close to that person's life. They would need to establish kind of that they are close in proximity to that individual to petition. What this bill does is it greatly expands the list of categorical individuals who can bring a potential petition against an individual. And so, if you look on page two, that includes licensed medical care providers, licensed healthcare providers. And then there's a slew of school staff who could potentially petition for an emergency risk, risk protection order. That could be our teachers, counselors, school administrators, school nurses, social workers, or college faculty. I think when it, when we're looking at things like social workers and counselors, they do have to have specific licenses in order to bring those, I'm just going to call it ERPOs, because that's what I just call them in my head. And then it also includes district attorneys, not school district attorneys, but DAs, like county attorneys, criminal attorneys could also petition for those. And then there are, this bill would also aim to provide funds for a public campaign regarding the ERPO law. So, it'd inform the public about these emergency risk protection orders, how you can obtain one, how can you determine if an individual poses a danger to themselves or others. I have this as a position of monitor. I will say that this bill has gone through both the House and the Senate. It was passed by the House last week on March 26. This was a heavily discussed and argued bill. I think they spent somewhere around 20 hours on the floor with kind of three firearm bills. And the Senate, it's now gone back to the Senate who's reviewing some of the House amendments. I, you know, I'm by no means advocating for or against this particular bill. But I'm just saying that it will bleed into schools in a significant way. There's not going to be any liability for an individual who doesn't raise a red flag. But on the other hand, you know, it's just kind of putting an additional onus on school staff to do this. And then, of course, we don't know about what implications that means. If we're talking about a minor child, will, does that mean that the family no longer can have firearms in their home? And really, kind of how far does this bill reach? We certainly know that there are some challenges, some Second Amendment challenges to the ERPO law as it stands. And we can certainly see that there will be some additional challenges moving forward if this bill were to... moving forward if this bill were to be passed. So I just kind of want to point this out, this will, it does kind of bleed into schools and may have an impact on kind of school-level decision-making.
Mr. Fall, do you see any connection with the Claire Davis Act with this bill?
So I've thought about that. I would say no. Well, I would say yes, but that would only be if there was kind of a known threat to school and on school grounds or kind of during a school-sponsored activity. And I think that regardless of this bill, Claire Davis would be triggered if an individual didn't raise a concern about a particular individual. But then we would go through the whole threat assessment process with that particular student to make sure that they are either prohibited from coming to school, or there's certain kind of safety procedures in place for those students. So I would say yes, yes, if that particular student did pose a threat to other students at school, but no if they didn't raise a red flag. Does that make sense? I know it's not very clear, but there's no liability for not raising a red flag, I guess. But there is liability if that individual poses a threat at school.
And so you have it as monitor because, so I'm trying to understand why we're not supporting it.
Well, I think I leave that to the board to kind of have that discussion and any kind of reasoning for. I think my take is it's a position to monitor because it's kind of already gone so far through the process, and I guess I should have done a better job of kind of catching this, that it kind of reached school level. It wasn't on our bill tracker necessarily because this is really a criminal statute. And so this is something that I've asked our lobbyist to continue to track. But in terms of, you know, amending or something of that nature or supporting, you know, I would kind of defer to the board on kind of any particular position.
I think in general, gun owners, that there's a group of gun owners that any red flag law is deemed infringement on their Second Amendment. And this is, in my opinion, the exact reason why, because as soon as you have one, they start expanding it. We already have a way to get a red flag raised through a law enforcement officer or individuals close to the thing, and now we just gave 15,000 other people a way to raise a red flag, and it's just, it just keeps infringing, 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 and mostly, most of the time, all these extra laws just end up making it harder for legal gun owners and people that are being responsible already. Criminals, by theory, don't follow laws, so more laws isn't going to keep them from following laws. But I'm a, I'm a hard no on this one. This is one of my fight-to-the-death ones, so I'm going to, I'm going to recommend that we oppose it, but I'm one of seven, so.
That pun intended. Fight to the death?
Yep, for my cold dead fingers type thing, yeah.
So I think we have, you know, like the context of red flag laws is to prevent school shootings, you know? And as a healthcare provider, that's one of the ones listed here. It's, you know, it's not just like 15,000. Yes, it's a lot of people, people who have degrees and training and, you know, like to me, the way it stands now, individuals close to the person in question, family members, roommates, like that's way more broad than the number that you just, you know.
Well, that's already in there, though.
Right, it's already in there. So we're not expanding it by that much more, you know? This is actually a more limited list compared to what's already in there. And it's people with training who aren't just going to, will nearly be doing this, so.
Yeah, I mean, you'd think until you get a social worker that is of a certain political view, and they just want everybody to be red flags because they don't want guns, period. You know, just the possibility for abuse is far, far greater and more political, the broader you make that. Somebody who's close to them probably holds the same values as them. So if you're, if a family member's like, "Oh shit, we have guns in my house," and so-and-so is, isn't looking right, that's, that's a lot different than a social worker who is politically motivated to, to make a judgment call. I think there's, there's already avenues. If there's, if there's already a threat or a reason, then these same people can contact a law enforcement officer and get this done without being able to do it themselves. I think that's, as far as my school perspective, I think it puts a lot of stress on, you know, or weight on a counselor, you know? She reports it to John, and then John can handle it appropriately, or as a law enforcement officer, but to say that a counselor now is responsible to do this, can, I don't think it's going to go anywhere positive.
So the shooter at Denver East High School was known to have brought a weapon to school multiple times and ends up shooting two deans who would have known that, about that student.
Yeah, but who legally possessed the weapon?
I don't know. I think he was a junior. He could have been a 18.
Can't have a, can't have a pistol unless you're 21.
You said this has already gone through House and Senate. I mean, is there any, is there any value for our debate about this? Or is this a more or less a done deal, and it's not really our bill anyway?
I think it's helpful for discussion, but I think just, it is, you know, ideologically speaking, it would put the district on one side or the other if we were to take kind of an official position. And that might have been more my reasoning as to why we should just monitor it, because as you say, this bill's already kind of made headway in terms of the House and the Senate. But, you know, nonetheless, I just think it was helpful to kind of discuss with the board to just kind of see what's coming.
Right. Thank you.
But I do appreciate and welcome your comments and you make good points.
Any other questions on this one, guys?
Okay, the last bill to discuss with you all, House Bill 231241, Task Force to Study K-12 Accountability System. This will be reviewed by the House Education Committee also on Wednesday, March 29th. So we know that there was the Accountability and Accreditation System audit. We know that a lot of the outcomes from that audit were very not helpful in terms of direction for what we need to be doing to change our system of accountability and credibility. So what this bill aims to do is it creates a 25-member task force that studies accountability and accreditation systems. And kind of that A through E list is some of the things that this accountability task force will be looking at. They'll be looking at academic opportunities or inequities that may impact academic achievement gaps, any promising practices from varying school districts to promote or to benefit the Accountability Accreditation System. I think they'll be looking nationwide for kind of best practices in that area, any improvements to expand and incentivize academic opportunities and address inequities, recommendations for legislation of rules, and leading indicators or instructional practices that could be added to the accountability measures. So this is just really a step forward in terms of the system of Accountability and Accreditation System. This task force will really be looking towards kind of potentially amending laws or rules as it relates to accreditation and accountability, and it'll kind of be a really thorough process. It might take one or two years for them to kind of come up with results. But I think in a lot of ways, this really is something that we're looking towards to have some better outcomes, especially when we're looking at inequities in the accreditation and accountability system and that framework. So that's really my recommendation for why we should be supporting this bill. There's not going to be any legal changes to rules, it's just going to be recommendations through this committee, but I think there could be some really positive outcomes, especially for students in these districts.
Nate, did you mention how they're recruiting people to be on this task force?
Yeah, so it does, it's very specific for kind of who's going to be on this task force. And so it's 25 members, and just for some examples so you're aware, one representative of a statewide organization of teachers, one representative of a statewide organization specializing in equity and inclusion, a representative of the Senate who's appointed by the President of the Senate, a representative who's an elementary school teacher with experience teaching in Colorado public schools, and so forth, a representative from the Rural School District Board. So they're really going to be trying to get a lot of folks, a lot of different stakeholder groups involved, and I think there's an application process for how those individuals will be appointed to this task force.
And then is it appointed by the Governor's Office or by, do we know? I don't know.
It looks like the Speaker of the House is going to appoint a chairperson, and the President of the Senate shall appoint a vice person, a vice chairperson, and then, I'm not sure exactly who's making that appointment. I'm not sure. I can find out.
Any other questions, Ben, on this one?
I'm not sure if there are any other bills that were kind of pending out there, if you had any questions about any of the previous bills that we discussed.
Do you know how that stuff, the bleed ended up?
I don't. I will find that out. Here, wherever we're at with that one.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Fall. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're to debrief the work session, and Sullivan, we can start with you.
As always, I appreciate that you keep these short and sweet and you just pull out specific bills to go over, Mr. Fall, because it is overwhelming and just gives us time to kind of more process than just having that list. So again, I'm going to keep promoting that you would do it in this fashion. Thank you for your time on that.
I too want to thank Mr. Fall for putting these together. Some of these are fairly inclusive to us as well, and I know it takes a little bit of time and his time, so I really do appreciate that, so.
Ms. Muffin?
Yes, thank you for the update. Thank you for the discussion.
Just excited to kind of go through the last bit of the calendar, getting into
the fun time of the school year, and thankful for these legislative updates, too. It's an important time of process, you know, that we need to, I've kind of neglected in my past, so it's exciting and intriguing to me, so thanks, Nate.
Dr. Campos, Fitz.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Fall, for the emails, and I ask you a lot of questions. So for all the extra time you've taken to help me wrap my head around some of these bills to decide what position I personally would like, but obviously, it's a position the board has to take together. So, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Bethes.
Thank you, Mr. Fall. Appreciate it as well, and it's nice to have Jillian Richard at the table today, so thank you for joining us.
Yeah, it is great to have you guys with us, and again, I know that you're busy. I look at our calendar, and I know that some of those pertains to you as well, and getting ready for graduation, early West graduation, UCA graduation. Anyway, yeah, it's amazing we're already here. Your school just getting away from us, but, yeah. Great meeting, guys. Thank you, thank you so much, and we're adjourned so that we can prepare for our next meeting at six o'clock.